All right, good evening. I'd like to call the February 6, 2023 meeting of Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be presiding over the meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Blackburn for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment. The prayer tonight is going is from "The Canticles of the Creatures" by Saint Francis of Assisi, and it will probably surprise no one to know that he is truly one of all the many saints that I admire and look to their teachings for guidance. Saint Francis is high among them. And a little bit about Saint Francis, he was Italian, and he was born to an Italian clothmaker in 1182, and his name was Francis Bernadone. And his father wanted a good businessman, not a man of God. And so Francis grew up, he was wealthy, he was popular, he was adored, but he always expressed himself as a free spirit, a dreamer, and a leader. And he spent a lot of his youth going around, being popular, his father's lovely tailored clothes, and really just having a life of privilege. At one point, he had a change of heart. It had to do with seeing a leper, and he gave this leper a kiss, and he said he felt so transformed by that action that he reevaluated his life, and he gave up his fine clothing. He started living outdoors, lived in a cave, didn't even have enough money to buy his food. He begged for his food. Over the course of his life, he, of course, had prayers and teachings. A lot of us know the prayer of Saint Francis, where it says, "Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace." But he became a patron saint now in our modern times, a patron saint for the animals and to the earth. And he was known to preach to the birds, he released animals from traps, and he once persuaded a village not to kill a wolf, but to feed the wolf instead. And he died at 45. So here's a little bit, a part of one of his canticles for the earth, and it says, "All praise be yours, my Lord, through all that you have made. And first, my Lord, brother, son, how beautiful is he, how radiant in all his splendor. And praise be yours, my Lord, through sister moon and stars, and the heavens you have made them bright and precious and fair. All praise be yours, my Lord, through sister earth, our mother, who feeds us in her sovereignty. Happy those who endure in peace, by you most high they will be crowned." Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, my God.
All right, let's move on. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protam Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, we have a call.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
I do, Mayor. I have several changes. The first, I would like to request that the council remove from the consent agenda item number five. The second item, I would request that the council add an update on the National Science Foundation Phase One grant and intent of support for the National Science Foundation Phase Two grant for innovative intersection planning, and add that as item... The first item under new business, we'll just call it...
How about 12A?
12A. Thank you, Mayor. 12A. Those are the changes I have, Mayor.
Motion to approve. Second. All right, motion been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Dr. Trebathan. Dr. Trebathan, you've got three minutes to address the mayor's question.
My name is Dr. Trebathan, honorable mayor, members of the council, city manager wall. It's hard to believe that 58 years ago, I sat in one of those hot seats that you're sitting in today. There were hot issues, and there were many things that were resolved with public housing and urban renewal. Today, it's a different world. Rocking chairs are no longer allowed, no twiddling of the thumb. Do nothing, say nothing. That's the tolerable in this day and time. We're no longer doubting what's happening to our environment, affecting the world, affecting our very lives. Our climate is changing adversely. Climate is warming, seas are rising, and weather is rampaging. We can do something to reduce our carbon footprint. The major cities in this state have hired professionals, sustainability managers, who have been successful in this endeavor. Greenville should hire such an individual to coordinate reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by our city departments. It will be beneficial to the health of our citizens.
Excuse me, I think I might...
And do our part.
Can you call out my...
Try tapping the bottom or something. I've seen that work.
That's it? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, yes. It will be beneficial to the health of our citizens and do our part to mitigate climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trebathan. And thank you for your service to our community 58 years ago. He's the first man I ever met. How about that? And you're still here.
Yeah.
And he is. I know. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Yes, sir. Next speaker is Jeff Moniz. You've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Monaco. I am chairman of the Cypress Group of the North Carolina Sierra Club. The Cypress Group of the North Carolina Sierra Club is made up of approximately 700 people in northeastern North Carolina, many from Greenville, who seek to educate themselves and others about the natural world. I speak for the Sierra Club tonight in support of Dr. Robert Shaw's presentation on the Environmental Advisory Committee later in this meeting. When, excuse me, when he talks about the 2023 goals of the EAC, Dr. Shaw will discuss why Greenville would benefit from a sustainability manager. Cypress Group members want a sustainability manager for Greenville as well. Many cities have already hired sustainability managers. They make communities better, as we have seen at ECU by the success of a similar position. So what drives the need for a sustainability manager? One answer comes from a recent article by Christiana Fioras, former executive secretary of the UN Framework Convention on Climate Change. She wrote, "The pen of history has passed from nature to humanity," or in other words, "Humans have taken the pen and are now writing the natural history of our planet." She further describes what this means by saying, "Around 1950, we moved from being passive recipients to being the direct driving force behind transformation in our natural environment." We, we humans now exercise such control over the planet that we have catapulted it and ourselves into a geological era unknown as the Anthropocene, the human-shaped epic. Latest scientific reports clearly state that the human control over the environment is causing radical changes to it. In the Anthropocene, human actions are putting stress on our natural environment. According to Fioras, we are facing increasing climate chaos and destruction of things critical to our survival. In Greenville, we have seen increased flooding and erosion, greater fluctuations in our weather, increasing pollution in rivers, and reports of species changes, just to name a few. We need to be reacting now. We need to make significant change this decade, the 2020s. As Fioras says, "We are the ones to make the needed changes." Carving a better future does not happen on its own. We need to be intentional and purpose-driven about our objectives with preserving the natural world. For Greenville, it means we must search out, sift through, and understand environmental data. Greenville leaders must then use these data to make their decisions. The sustainability manager will do this and help all of you, the leaders, be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Monaco. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Marion Swinker. Ms. Swinker, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm here also to talk in support of the EAC and sustainability. Sustainability is the process of avoiding waste and conserving resources, and this is important if you care about the environment and if you care about conservation and the state of our earth. Now, that may not be what's important to everyone, but sustainability is also about saving money. The North Carolina cities that have established sustainability programs are reporting savings of half a million dollars to a million dollars per year, and this includes multiple cities, at least as far as I can tell from the internet, including Raleigh, Apex, Hendersonville, Cary, Durham, also Asheville and Chapel Hill. And so I think it's important as far as Greenville... Well, Greenville's made big strides in recent years. You'll probably hear about those from Dr. Shaw, but in order to continue that progress, I think that we've already picked the low-hanging fruit. I think it'll take more effort, sustained attention, and a full-time position to keep that momentum going. And so I would love to see Greenville establish its credibility as a forward-thinking city and to join the other municipalities in our state who feel that sustainability is important enough to make an investment either in personnel or a full office, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swinker. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay. Next speaker is Chad Carline. Mr. Carline, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, council. My name's Chad Carline, and I'm the sustainability manager for East Carolina University. I don't want to stand up here and just like say how awesome sustainability managers are, pat myself on the back, anything like that. Everything that I'm about to tell you is a team sport. What's that? No, I'll let you all do that for me afterwards now, but everything about sustainability is a team sport, and it's a journey, not a destination. I started at ECU in March 2016, and one month from now will mark seven years on the job building a sustainability program at ECU. I'm the first person to hold this position, and again, like I said, everything I'm about to say that's been accomplished since starting has been a team effort. It truly is. So I'm just going to list off a bunch of things. When I got to ECU, there was one active student group, Eco Pirates. We're now over eight active student groups working on all sorts of different topics or projects related to different topics. We have beehives and pollinator gardens. We've implemented all kinds of green stormwater infrastructure projects. We have hosted dorm energy competitions to raise awareness amongst the student groups and to lower our electric bills. We just met with a contractor today looking at three roofs on Health Sciences Campus for solar arrays. We have a campus tree trail, an arboretum, and inventory of trees on campus. Students have mapped bike racks, outdoor trash and recycle bins, light poles, green space, stormwater best management practices. I host monthly film screenings to educate the campus community. We have a whole week of activities around Campus Sustainability Day and Earth Day. We do litter cleanups, river cleanups, trail maintenance, garden workdays, tree plantings, awards that we've received. We're a Bee Campus USA, a Tree Campus USA, a bicycle-friendly university. We won Clean Air Carolina's Blue Sky Award for Partner of the Year. The culture has truly shifted on campus over the last seven years. Numerous people have told me that they were on the Sustainability Committee for years, and nothing was really accomplished. Lots of talk about things that were happening from a campus operations standpoint, but no additional changes were taking place. People that serve on the committee, similar to our Environmental Advisory Committee, have full-time jobs and other responsibilities. The nature of committee work being voluntary limits the members' ability to effect real change. Having someone work full-time on sustainability takes plans from a drawing board all the way through implementation and evaluation. Similar to a consultant, I put teams together and connect the dots so that we can implement projects and programs. I'll be posting a sustainability outreach position next month, which demonstrates growth of the program. I think that there's ample opportunities for myself and ECU as a whole to partner with a potential sustainability manager for the city.
And that's time.
And I do think that the work of a sustainability manager would attract businesses, help retain young professionals, and increase the quality of living in our community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Carline.
Thanks, Chad.
And I'm gonna tell you, I know he is serious, because at Bike, Walk, NC, the Summit, he literally told everybody that if they didn't put their garbage or their stuff in the right receptacles, he was gonna jump into the receptacles and put it in the right one afterwards. That's when I knew you were 100% serious, so... That was awesome, by the way. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
We do not have any additional registered speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, so you know, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to... Move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items: an amendment of the city council's 2023 meeting schedule; item two is a resolution amending the city of Greenville's personnel policies; item number three is the master right-of-way encouragement agreement with Spectrum Southeast LLC; item number four is the acceptance of a portion of tax parcel 00598 from FLB Properties Incorporated for future recreational and open space use; item six is a resolution indeed of release for the abandonment of a 30-foot-wide utility easement across tax parcel 86716; item number seven is an ordinance amending the Greenville Utilities Commission gas capital projects budget for Phase One expansion of the LNG peak shaving facility and adoption of a reimbursement resolution; item number eight is an authorization to apply for the assistance to firefighter's grant to replace 30 self-contained breathing apparatus units; item number nine is a contract award for the 2023 Street Rehabilitation and Preservation Project; contract award for professional services for construction engineering and inspection and construction material testing; and the award of task order number one for the 2023 CEI and CMT on-call contract; item number 10 is the contract award to Ally University Security Systems Services for security and risk mitigation services at the GK Butterfield Transportation Center; item number 11 is the approval to purchase replacement vehicle and equipment for the Public Works Department; and item 12, are various tax refunds greater than $100.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I would like to pull item number four off of the consent agenda, and other than that, I would make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is the acceptance of a portion of tax parcel 00598 from FLB Properties Incorporated for future recreational and open space use. Recreation and Parks Director Don Ottagon is available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Do you have a slide showing this area?
I do.
If that's available, I'd love to get that displayed.
This is it right here.
This, you know, this is just an amazing... I just wanted to pull this off the consent agenda just to bring it to everyone's attention and just give us all a chance to be really grateful to the person who has donated this land. This is seven and three-quarters acres right there where the greenway begins on Evans Street, and in the end, however we use it, whether it just becomes open space or whether it becomes programmed, this is just a tremendous gift, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the value of the gift, and also to let everybody know, hey, look at this, isn't this cool? So, Don, anything that you'd like to add about this?
No, ma'am, but thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. No, this is exciting, and it's a great piece of property. We talked about it at the date in some meetings, so it's a great opportunity for us, and once we gain ownership, we'll take a look at where we go next.
I think one of the things when we look at, when we've had the park survey, that we've just been seeing the results of, one of the things that has come up is the idea of connectivity between parks and greenways, and this is just right within that sort of priority of making sure parks and greenways are connected and that people can get to parks and open spaces safely, and this is a perfect example of that happening. So this is just real exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And motion to approve.
Second. All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Now we will move on to item 12A.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12A is an update on the National Science Foundation Phase One grant and intent of support for a National Science Foundation Phase Two grant for innovative intersection planning. Lisa Kirby, city engineer, will kick off the presentation and introduce our guest.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The city of Greenville has been successful at creating appealing mixed-use environments, but if our transportation corridors don't adapt to those new uses, we set ourselves up for dangerous environments where we have more bicyclists, more pedestrians interacting with vehicular traffic, which brings us here tonight. Let me introduce Chris Cunningham. He's the director of research with ITRI, which is the Institute for Transportation Research and Education at NC State. Chris's team reached out to us about two years ago, April of '21. They were leading a NCDOT research project called Urban Applications of Innovative Intersection Designs. As a result, we've been working with Chris and his team since then and supported their Phase One grant, which he'll give you an update tonight and talk about Phase Two a little bit. So I'll turn it over to him.
Good. Thank you all for having me today. Working on a very interesting project. The folks on your city staff have been wonderful to work with, I just want to say that upfront. We've enjoyed working with Lisa, Elliot, Shante, a lot of the staff, been fantastic to work with. So today, I've been introduced. We're going to talk about an NCDOT research project and how that might help some things that you're doing in your city and how that's translated into an NSF grant opportunity, which is very big to bring into y'all's backyard if you so desire. And so I do want to recognize my two team members, member Chalene Passilar from this College of Design, and also a professional engineer practicing on his own out of Utah. I'm just gonna skip right by that. So there's two objectives today. We're hoping to provide a quick dubdate, like I said, on some of the work that we're doing on two fronts, but really what we're hoping to get from you guys is a letter of support for an NSF Phase Two grant. And so that Phase One grant followed our NCDOT research, which is basically academic research for academic purposes, very innovative, out-of-the-box, research-y type stuff, right? Stuff that, you know, would be way outside of the bounds of what you would normally consider. But then we proposed on a civic grant through NSF, which is a Phase One $50,000 grant, to explore how we can look at implementing some of these ideas, not all of them, potentially using some of them in cities across our state. And so y'all are one of the cities that we've been working with for a couple of years now. And so the Phase Two grant is a million-dollar opportunity that's due March 1st, and it also provides support for y'all's staff, it's not just funding for us. So just keep that in mind. So the key thing here with the two projects, just to be clear, the first one is the DOT project that Lisa mentioned, started two years ago. Again, it's academic, it's researchy, that's what some of the pictures are I'm going to show you today. Very out-of-the-box type ideas, don't take them as we think you should implement these things tomorrow, but they are good ideas, so, you know, they're things that we can work with. NSF is about implementation. Is there some small pieces of it maybe that you might consider in your area? Are there other alternatives that I'm not even going to show you today that you might want to think about? So just make sure you keep that in the back of your mind today here, that this is not something we're trying to shove down your throat, this is just ideas. All right, so what's the issue? How do we convert what we have started calling in our profession "strods"? In other words, some combination of streets and roads, that's what you see everywhere in your town, we drove down many of them, every town and city in North Carolina has them, in fact, everywhere across the US you have them. We don't have great streets, we don't have great roads, we kind of have a mix of the two. And what happens is you put these roads in a rural suburban area, in the middle of nowhere, you've got them all over the place, right? And then neighborhoods start popping up, and then all of a sudden, somebody wants to transition them into something that's more walkable, bikable, more developable, maybe urbanize it in some way, and it becomes impossible because the road does not support that. And so you get stuck. So we get stuck. And so we call that, in our group, we call that the futon of transportation. You can't sleep on it well, and you can't watch TV on it well, but it serves both purposes, okay? And you get stuck. So how can we get away from that? That's the goal. So here's the example intersection that you might have in Greenville, typical road, it starts reaching congestion, what's the solution? What do we always do when we have a signalized intersection? I heard it in the meeting right before this, what do we do? We widen it, and we put some left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes, right? Because that's what we do everywhere. So it goes from something like this to something like that. Business owners get irritated because you're taking their property, right? You can't win. The only way you win is you give it a little more capacity, but business owners hate it, it's not good for walkable, bikable environments, because now your roadway's longer, people are driving faster, it's a big problem. So you don't get win-wins. You get wins for capacity, that's about it. So as part of this project, what we were tasked with for NCDOT, again, the academic exercise, is we wanted to create, use innovative ideas to create win-win, win-wins. We wanted as many wins as possible. I guarantee you, on this city council, I have no idea y'all's background, there's somebody on this city council that's a pedbike person, guarantee you, at least one. There's somebody on this city council that's a land developer or likes land development or business-oriented, okay? You're all against each other a little bit, there's a little tension that comes when those types of things come up. It makes getting projects across the line very challenging, right? It's hard to get win-win, win-wins. And so that's what we're really looking for, is how can we create those? So what's one win? We want to be able to increase capacity for vehicles, that's the DOT win. They are always trying to get more capacity, that's what they look at, right? We also want to provide options that can limit impact on the surrounding communities, not just vehicles. We want to have ped-bike operations. We want business owners to have minimal impacts, we want residents to have minimal impacts because they're the ones that are going to be at your front door with their pitchforks and fire torches, right? Like, that's what's gonna happen. And we also want to provide safer facilities for all users, not just motorists, peds, bikes, things that y'all talked about just in your last meeting. It was very interesting to see how it caveated. So if you could think of one area in Greenville, I'm not saying this is the one you would think of, we thought of two or three different areas. And this is why we came and talked to Greenville, we could see opportunities, it was ripe for opportunities to do redevelopment. Now, don't look at this and get scared, okay? This is like the most innovative of innovative ideas I could have shown you today, okay? Just to give you an idea. What made y'all's area so unique is that you have Greenville Boulevard cutting out this diagonal across this parallel, and so you have these opportunities for what we call quadrants, and you have one in your backyard that's coming, where you can make these right turns before the main intersection, where it's kind of natural to happen because you're already on a skew. And those are these orange lines that you see here, where you could have these kind of quadrants, where if you're coming through, turning right, it would make sense to do that because you're already on a skew. But there's a lot of other places you could put in innovative intersections. You could even put in one-way couplets. Think of the old downtowns that we used to have that were so walkable, like the gentleman here was speaking of today. Guarantee you, he can remember downtowns that you walked down that were nice streets that people walked down, they went to the ice cream store, they parked on the street, very nice, walkable areas, bikable if you wanted to do that today. It would be hard to find those areas today. Now, the key is, the ideas I'm gonna show you could be phased over time. So I'm showing the Greenville Mall today, that north-south route would be very controversial today, let's just be honest, okay? But we know malls, okay? We know malls are starting to struggle. People shop... People shop online these days, right? We know that that's going to turn into what we call a gray field eventually. That area's going to turn into a parking lot, you can probably think of one, many of them probably in Greenville, where the parking lot is now sitting there but the business is gone. And something infills it that's not great. We all have them in every city. That's a gray field. What would you do with that? So this could be something that would be phased maybe as an option. Now this, again, is an extreme example. So, I'm going to focus on three areas. I'm going to focus right here on a picture of this one-way couplet that's going to, this is two one-way streets, a northbound and then a southbound coming the other way with this quadrant where it attaches first. And then I'm going to come up here and show you what this could look like, because that looks crazy, right? To run this road right next to Publix, you can't even probably visualize that. And then I'll show you an example of what a quadrant setup could look like over here. So this is that quadrant I was showing you that's right here with the southbound couplet coming in, where you could use an innovative intersection design. Now that looks kind of crazy, it looks like a Q-tip sitting in the middle of the road right now, right? If you look at the median, it kind of looks like a Q-tip design. We've probably seen intersections with U-turns. They have lots of benefits for safety, lots of benefits for capacity, a whole lot of benefits for capacity. But one that's never talked about is pedestrian facilities. You cross basically one-way streets with big medians in between, very safe, short crossings. And then there's these blue areas. And what in the world are those? So the blue areas, I'm going to show you what it would look like from the street side, but you could have reverse angle parking with what we call these slow zones where you're coming in and out of parking, but that's also where bicyclists could ride, the fifteen mile per hour zone, if you will. And then the bypassing vehicles could drive straight through. So that would be kind of what it would look like, just to give you a visual of that. Very inviting, now I know the picture is the picture, right? It just looks great. But in truth, that's kind of a bigger version of what we had in the old days. People parked on the street, we know reverse angle parking is much safer for when you're backing, you don't have to back out of parking spaces anymore. Stay safer bicyclists riding through the slow zones, whatever it might be. So this would be the mid-block crossing location where the split happens from the north to south. And then, sorry. Here's an example of the mall where the couplets would be. So here's your mall as it sits today with the Publix. This could be staged twenty years down the road for an hour or more, okay? This is something that when the land developer says, "We're struggling over here," you could propose an idea. This is one of many ideas. Just let me just say that upfront, I do not want to stir any controversy here in Greenville. So this would be kind of a before picture of what that would look like with your standard intersection, it's going to get lots of lanes and it looks really ugly, versus something here where you have a split of the main road, this is where I was just showing you this picture with the quadrant coming in, and you have a northbound that comes back together to this bidirectional up here, and then the southbound one-way split comes this way. And then an east-west split that comes this way. You could phase east-west first, north-south twenty years from now, it doesn't really matter. And you create this nice environment in the middle, but you're still probably thinking, what in the world is that road running next to the Publix? What does that look like? So this is kind of what it looks like from the side view, okay? Today, this is bidirectional traffic. Lots of right-of-way right there, right? Six, seven lanes wide. If I put a one-way street right there, I've got a lot of right-of-way to work with. Okay, one-way street that's only five, four lanes wide instead of six lanes wide. You can use those for slow lanes, for bike lanes, you can use them for all kinds of things. And you could see how a road could snake right by that Publix through here. It would impact one business here and here, but I'm just saying it's a possibility, not saying that just that's what you should do. And then it comes back together. So just some ideas of what that could look like. Looking down Arlington at Greenville today, this is two-way versus one-way, lots of right-of-way, five lanes wide. I can make it three lanes wide and get more capacity, because it's just one direction I'm worried about. Now, if you think about it, these slow lanes, I didn't really describe these earlier very well, but the slow lanes are, you're able to come in and out of the slow lanes between the intersections at will. So if you're looking for parking, you snake in, if you're coming out of parking, you snake out into the bypass lanes and you just go. Okay, if you want to continue looking for parking, you just snake around the corner. Here's what it kind of looks like, the mall again with the Publix today, and what it could look like, just as an example, if you just put one-way couplets in. You have plenty of right-of-way to make something like that happen. But it's very innovative, it's very out-of-the-box, it's not what everybody thinks you should do because everybody wants to add a left-turn bay everywhere. That's just the way we think, because everybody's a traffic engineer, because we all drive cars. Okay? I'm just being honest, that's the truth, we all have our opinions. And then here's an example off to the west by Evans and Arlington, just to show you what a quadrant could look like. This is basically what it looks like today, if y'all can all picture this, hopefully y'all can picture it, because I can't. Hey, a quadrant could be implemented today, this is bidirectional traffic, but I could implement a couplet alt system all the way around, and a, not a couplet, excuse me, a quadrant, all the way around, where I get rid of the left turns at the intersection altogether and you just divert them. If you want to make a left this way, well, now you just turn left here, come across, and left there. So basically, you're making more intersections, but the intersections are way more efficient. As a business owner, I like that because everybody wants the corner property, right? I've created more corner properties, but I've made it more efficient overall as a system. It's more walkable, developers are going to want to build there because they can get a piece of that corner property. There's more corners to put the Walgreens on, the CBS or whatever it is. So as another example, if I'm coming south, I don't even know if this is truly southbound, but I'm going to call it southbound, I think it's actually eastbound.
South.
It is south?
Evans is due northbound.
Thank you. So southbound Evans, if you wanted to make a left at the main intersection here, I would have to have left-turn mazes to do that. So now I've got to service those left-turn lanes, which prevents my through lanes from going northbound. So you would just snake them left here and then left here. So by separating those movements a little bit, you make it way more efficient, you have less lanes of traffic you have to cross, way more walkable, and land developers love this type of design because there's more corners. Just another example of the quadrant, so you can kind of see what it looks like before and after today. So I didn't have a lot of time, I could show you pictures all day. But let me talk real quick about what we need today. I'm asking for a letter of support from the city to help us with our Phase Two grant, it's due March first. So it's due in less than a month. And we know what we're doing on our academic research, it's academic, basic research for research. We're looking for implementable ideas. It does not mean all of these crazy ideas, there's lots of crazy ideas, okay? You probably can see stakeholders like wanting to chop your throat off at the idea, right? But there's something in there that is useful, potentially. And so what we're trying to do is say in NSF for implementation, we would like to give y'all lots of options, not one option that's really far out of the box, but lots of options that go from something simple with what impacts that has for safety, operations, ped bike, business opportunities, all of those. And so what makes, what kinds of things might make sense in our city? They could be considered for phased approaches, they could be one small thing out of a bunch of options, they could be all of them. And then we want to provide performance metrics on each of those, and of course, you've got to be able to visualize these things. If you can't see what it looks like on the road, if you're just looking at a plan-view diagram, it's really hard to immerse yourself in that environment and see what it looks So what do we need, or what are we asking for? We're asking for a letter of support from our civic partners. You're not the only one we're asking it for. If we get a letter of support for you, it basically says that you're willing to spend some time with us and we're willing to pay you for that time on your staff if you would like us to, to just think outside the box about it. It does not mean you have to implement anything, okay? We have a lot of different ways we can do implementation, but we would like you to consider it. And we would like to use your city as one as a potential partner. Long-term, if the Phase Two is granted, obviously we'll need some staff time, again, we'll provide that funding, and we may need to do some focus groups if you so desire with stakeholders, if you would like for us not to do any of that, that's fine too. We can be perfectly amenable to whatever you would like. And of course, we're happy to give any council updates anytime you would like. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Councilmember Smiling?
So I think it's a great idea and I would love to, and I think we should absolutely work with you and collaborate with you, we can, I think we can use all the, we can always use, you know, fresh ideas and fresh, but since I work in a research office at E C U, I'd be remiss if I didn't suggest, you know, have you approached E C U as a collaborator in this and potentially as a sub-recipient or a co-partner in the, in your NSF grant?
So I have not. We proposed, N C D O T may have proposed this, it is possible, they have a small transportation department at E C U. So it's possible that they submitted on this research grant, but we had no idea who we were partnering with when we proposed on this project and got funded, and so.
But just for long-term purposes, I'm sure there are engineers at E C U that'd love to be involved with you on this.
Sure, there's certainly opportunities and I can talk with my team about that for Phase Two funding.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Just an observation, how wonderful, when I saw this, I thought it was wonderful. I mean, I, I think as you rightly pointed out, these are ideas that today seem really not only out of the box, but just couldn't be done. But what I like about this is that it gives us a new idea, a new way to look at our city, new ways to think about getting people around and new, and as you said, the win-win-win-win. I see more developable property at the same time we make our city more pedestrian-friendly and safer, and there's everything to love about that. And also, I mean, at a very basic level, this is something that we are used as one of two test cities. We were selected and we're very grateful that we were selected, and we're not paying anything for all these really good ideas, so very grateful for that. And if, if we need a motion, I'm happy to make that motion of support for this letter, and that would be my motion.
Can I, can I ask, add one thing if you don't mind?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so one thing that I failed to mention early on is, one of the goals of our team is, if I can say it in kind of a motto, is we want to make facilities that you can drive slower but travel faster. In other words, think about every stoplight you hit and where you meander through it in Greenville. If we can create more capacity and then make it such, and you can do this on one-way roads very easily, where you travel through that facility slower, that's good for businesses, they love when you drive past their business slow. They want you to see their signs, but you actually get through the entire facility much faster. So drive slower, travel faster is a kind of a motto that we have on our team. That's good for pedestrians, that's good for bicycles, that's good for everybody.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? And Councilmember Blackburn and I have become really close.
Is there?
She's very, she's very big into the pedestrian stuff and I'm very big into like the development stuff. We've had this newfound love for one another.
I've been to enough town council meetings and, yeah, I've been to a lot of different test-style meetings, so I know that the group can be very diverse.
We're getting very close. She's losing a lot of friends, but we're getting very close.
You need to switch your name tags, by the way.
Yes.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirteen, our annual board and commission presentations. I'll call forward Renita Jones, who will provide a presentation on the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Renita serves as the chair to the Affordable Housing Loan Committee.
Okay.
She doesn't need help, she's got it.
She's got it.
She's an expert.
Went back to my corporate experience.
All right.
Long time ago.
Anytime.
Well, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Ah, City Council, yes, fine. Going to review the Affordable Housing Loan Committee, I need to make a larger, oh, I forgot that part. Okay. I have a senior moment then, okay?
Everybody, everybody needs a good team.
See, I haven't done that to all of us, nor have I.
Okay, I'm going to review what has happened for the past year with the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. We, I will say this, we have several members who will, our term will be ending soon, so we know we will need some new people, so please, I just want you to be aware of that. I'm the chair, the co-chair is Derek Cherry, Ann Fisher, Jack Brock, Kevin Howard, Martin Tasky, and Judy Wagner. She was a member of the committee, but she left back in February. Our city council liaison is Marion Blackburn, thank you. Okay, what has happened, our responsibilities primarily are to assist the housing division in their duties. And one of the things has to do with strengthening and extending the partnership with the public and private sector, and that involves a variety of things. And one of the other things that's evolved, that's dear to my heart, is providing decent, affordable housing to the citizens here in Greenville and making sure that those environments are suitable as well, and also to expand the economic opportunities for individuals From the community block grants, we voted and gave a total of a hundred and forty thousand dollars last year, and you see what's listed here. There were a variety of organizations that this was their first time or second times, and there are several that we had given to numerous times. But you see it listed, probably gone through all of them, but one thing that I would like to add, housing is a problem, we know that. If you're not aware of it, I always like to say this, I'm a product of West Greenville and I had the opportunity to come back to Greenville, and to see what has happened to the city, especially in West Greenville, it breaks my heart, but to see what is happening, it makes me smile. So things are happening. With the, with the other organizations here that are listed, it's nice to know that the people are applying for the grants and the money is given out to help enhance the growth of the city as well. Our major accomplishment, we did this year, we only gave out, approved one home grant loan, and that was for a twenty percent down payment assistance loan. In addition to that, there were several other programs that are required that we accomplished. We did the CAPA, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Plan for twenty-one and for twenty-two. And then also, we did the five-year consolidation plan on fair housing. With, with these plans, we did get public, public, I wish you could say, we went to the public and presented it to them, and they were able to give some, some of their recommendations as well. And in addition, we did make a recommendation to give additional money to the Community Crossroads Center, that's the homeless shelter, and of course, there's great need there. One of the things I would like to say, this is my last term serving the committee, and I would like to say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to do so. As I said before, West Greenville, I have a place in my heart for there, and I live there, and seeing the changes that are taking place, it's mixed emotions, but overall, seeing the growth that is taking place in the city as well, I would like to commend the council and also the citizens for voting, voting in and for the things that we do with the various committees. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Jones?
I do.
Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any particular reason that we've only done one down payment assistance? Was that for the entire two thousand two?
From my understanding, yes. I think was that, that was all that we had come through, I do believe. Is that correct?
I'm happy to provide some support for that answer. Yeah, so we had, going off the top of my head here, I want to say about four or five down payment subsidies that were provided in two thousand twenty-one. I think just with the market shift and the way things have changed, we only had one home D P A. We do have two other programs that aren't funded through federal dollars, so we still have had some activity there. I mean, we look forward to continuing continuing to fund that program and having additional dollars available for down payment subsidies, especially with additional with our next phases in Lincoln Park.
Thank you. Great question. Yes.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your dedication to this board, and we'll miss you, we'll miss your presentations, you always give an incredible presentation, so thank you. All right, Madam Manager, our next.
Our next presentation will be for the Board of Adjustment, and Chair Sharon Evans will provide that presentation. Ms. Evans?
Hello, everyone. I am Dr. Sharon Evans. It's a pleasure to see you all, haven't seen you in a while, and the Board of Adjustments is fun. Chris Lilly is my vice chair. We have six members that reside in the city limits and two that reside in the city's ETJ. The purpose of our board is to hear the special use permits as they come before us, the variances and from planning and development regulations, and appeals of staff decisions related to planning and zoning. And our decisions are all based on the general statute. In 2020, we had 23 cases, we had 43 in 2021, and 2022, a total of 35. Primarily, our cases are tobacco shops, tobacco shops, and tobacco shops. Mini storage, mental health facilities, as well as convenience stores. And these are the other board members. We have Ann Bellas, Nathan Cohen, John Landrine-Hunt, McKinnon, Ryan Purtle, Daniel Daniel Worrell, and Tanya Foreman. We do have two members that will be coming off this year. I am not one of the two. I get to serve another year, as long as they don't keep me late at night.
Because it's fun, right?
I get the spotlight, I sit in your seat. And that's the end of my presentation, unless you have questions. Of course, appeals based on our decision can only go to the Supreme Court. We do have two cases that are being appealed and coming back to us for discussion when it's coming up this month. Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Dr. Evans?
Yes, Sharon's fine.
Dr. Sharon?
Okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your hard work and dedication on the Board of Adjustments. I know those are really fun meetings, because I've watched a few of them. So thank you. All right, our final presentation, Madam Manager.
Final presentation is the Environmental Advisory Commission, Dr. Robert Shaw will provide that presentation. Chair Shaw?
He brought the biggest entourage, too, for the night.
Right, I don't need to make a presentation because it's already been made by the public speakers. The Environmental Advisory Commission has these people, and I would like to really acknowledge the support of Ann Maxwell for the last seven years. Her term ends in April, and she's been a strong contributor to the commission. I also would like to thank the other members of the support to the EAC listed here. The role of the Environmental Advisory Commission is to recommend matters of environmental concern and serve as a technical advisor to the city council. We've been an active commission during 2022, and I'd like to highlight just three of our accomplishments. We reviewed the Horizon's 226 Plan, and I'll get back to that in a few minutes. We accomplished a greenhouse gas inventory, which I'll discuss, and we continue to advocate for a sustainability director for the city. The reason why we wanted to get a greenhouse gas inventory for the city operations is that greenhouse gases are produced by burning of fossil fuels, human activity, and these greenhouse gases result in the trapping of heat in our environment, and we're all aware that the temperature of the environment of the world is increasing. The problem with that is that it leads to dramatic events in, weather events. We're all aware of the drought and the burning fires in the western part of the United States. 2022, there was a devastating flood in eastern Kentucky that affected indigent population. Florida has spent on just one hurricane over $50 million in repairing that. So by measuring greenhouse gases, we can then set goals to reduce greenhouse gases and thereby help to mitigate climate change and these weather disasters. We wrote a proposal to the Duke School of Environment in 2021 that was accepted to come to the city of Greenville, measure our greenhouse gas emissions, and these two students wrote a 47-page report and delivered it to Ann Wall, who really supervised the program, and to the EAC. And to be brief, the results of this greenhouse gas inventory show that the number one cause for emissions of greenhouse gases in Greenville is vehicle fleet, city buses, cars, trucks. The number two contributor to greenhouse gases by the city is purchased electricity, street lights, and electricity used to heat and air condition our buildings. And the third contributor is employee commuting. Their recommendations in this report succinctly stated was that we should improve vehicle efficiency and establish an Office of Sustainability to monitor greenhouse gas emissions and coordinate efforts to reduce that. So what does a sustainability officer do? I spent some time with the sustainability manager in Asheville. Asheville is similar-sized city as Greenville, it's very different, but some of her activities are to set goals for carbon emission reduction, and Asheville has a goal of 2% reduction per year, they monitor that. Governor Cooper, with Executive Order 80, has suggested that state operations reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by the year 2030. These managers collaborate with department managers to achieve the goals for reduction of greenhouse gases. They apply for grants, such as payment of charging stations, and I think it's important to remember that federal government in 2022 has allocated about $370 billion to be spent over 10 years for things like charging stations and other how greenhouse gas emission reduction programs, and it's important that a sustainability officer be able to manage the application for these grants from the federal government. She monitors a green savings account, they save tremendous money on purchased energy every year. These managers direct food policy, many, many of these cities with these managers have community gardens, and they advocate for saving food and advocating for plant-based diets. And the last thing that these sustainability officers do is they become members of the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network. These directors from around the southeast, or in part of the United States, collaborate. An example she gave is that they are improving the vehicle fleet efficiency in Asheville, and she learned from other communities how to prioritize that and how to do it more efficiently. They have monthly Zoom meetings, learn from each other, and I was astounded to learn that there are 21 members of the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network in North Carolina. You can see an example of the towns that are members of this, and 12 of these communities actually have paid sustainability managers. The benefits of a sustainability office include energy savings, as Mr. Carwin discussed earlier, ECU has reduced purchased electricity since 2016 by 19% since he assumed that position. The city of Asheville has avoided energy expenditures of about $1.3 million per year. Sustainability officers also promote growth. There's a lot of growth in green energy jobs. These jobs are well-paying. Governor Cooper recently spoke in Elizabeth City and said that in the future, off the coast of North Carolina, there's going to be tremendous wind farms, and $45 billion is going to be invested in developing these wind farms, and I maintain that Greenville could be a part of of that process. Dr. Greg Kearney is a colleague of mine at the Brody School of Medicine, and at a recent medical conference, he asked the question, what do allergies, liver failure, premature birth, depression, and heat stroke have in common? They are health effects from climate change happening in North Carolina. I'm a pulmonary physician, and I certainly have seen the effects of climate change in increasing pediatric asthma in eastern North Carolina. The United Nations in 2018 gave a report that stated that the major risk to the health of people of the world and the future comes from the effects of climate change. So the goals of the EAC for 2023 are to establish a position of sustainability coordinator, to coordinate city operations, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and getting back to the Horizon's 226 Plan, a sustainability manager will help formulate a green energy plan for the city. This is something that involves a certain amount of expertise and time that members of the EAC really don't have. A sustainability director will continue to encourage social media, supportive environmental stewardship, collaborate with GUC to promote residential solar electricity and use of electricity rather than natural gas for cooking, recommend environmental technologies that would benefit the cities of Greenville, such as lighting standards, recycling, and chemical use, research funding, opportunities for EV charging stations, and revert review current tree protection policies, and make recommendations to the council. So the speakers at the public comment period tonight expressed more eloquently than I can their support for the reasons that we should have a sustainability manager in Greenville. And the EAC believes that with a sustainability manager, Greenville can reach the triple bottom line of balancing environmental stewardship, economic growth, and social responsibility, and I thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Dr. Shaw?
Oh, I do.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Dr. Shaw, thank you so much for your presentation, and for all the good information that's in there. You know, one of the things that I've learned is even though I've, you know, considered myself environmentally aware or whatever, is that the reason that we're moving away from natural gas and towards electricity is that electricity can come from different sources. There can be wind, there can be solar, and I, that has really kind of helped me to really break down why we're moving towards electricity, because in the past, electricity just came from coal, and that's why maybe natural gas was seen as a better alternative. But now we see, well, we're getting away from coal firing, and we're doing that that mixture of of electricity and sources for electricity. I guess I've heard pretty clearly tonight from yourself and the speakers, very well described that if if you were to say, what is the single most important thing that City Greenville could do for the environment? We really do kind of have a house on fire right now. It's it's our house, it's our planet. What would you say that single most important thing is? Because there were a lot of goals there, but in your opinion, what do you think is the most important?
For individuals or for the city?
Both, I guess, if you have thoughts.
I'll, we've addressed the city, I'll address what individuals can do, and it's difficult to pinpoint one exact thing that we can all do, but I'll turn it over back to you. I assume, knowing that you're an environmentally conscious person, that you've had an energy audit by GUC, which they do for free, and I assume that in that energy audit, they found that you have a very efficient electric heat pump, that you've turned the thermostat down in your house when you're watching TV in the evening, you have a ski parka on because it's so cold, that you drive less, that your house is close to your place of work, so you can walk or ride your bike and use your car less. So all of those things, plus you've changed your diet to a plant-based diet. Eating a lot of red meat actually results in production of methane from the farms that do the meat. So I think you've already done all those things, and probably the most important thing you can do is to support the initiative to have a sustainability manager and talk to your colleagues, talk them into that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I did have that energy audit, and it was very useful and very informative, and but I don't wear the parka. I do have lots of blankets, and I got a couple of dogs, so.
Cats, I think.
Yeah, they count.
I'm sure Mayor Conley, when he's watching TV with the kids, they all have ski parkas on.
No doubt, no doubt.
Thank you very much, that was a very informative presentation, and lots of amazing good work, so thank you all for that.
Yep, thank you, Dr. Shaw, and I appreciate it, too. I will tell you that Dr. Shaw is very dedicated to this board, and we appreciate your dedication and everyone else that serves on the board. He's come to my office and sat down and took up many hours of his time really trying to push forward with with what the EAC is trying to accomplish, so we appreciate your hard work and your dedication to that. I know our city manager has been working on some stuff, and hopefully it's a good move in the right direction. I don't think she's got a lot of details about it right now, but she is working on some some things, I think, to help push along that direction that you'd like to see, so I don't know if you want to make any comments on it.
I would, I think that's fine, Mayor. We are, I'm exploring a couple of opportunities and identifying some partners to potentially participate. More to come. And this, it's important to point out that this is the period of time where the staff are actively engaged in pulling the budget together, the budget that we will present to the council in early May, so this is the right time for us to to do this work.
Councilwoman Smiley?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask that, you know, a couple of presenters have said that other cities have found this sort of position to be cost-neutral or even revenue-positive, right? That they're, again, I don't, their experience may differ from ours, but that the, you know, the ability of a person in this position to identify cost savings, either efficiency base or something, might actually offset the cost of of hiring that person. We've seen that in other places where the cost of a billing clerk in our emergency services office, you know, billing office resulted in collections that exceeded the cost of hiring the billing clerk. So I would encourage, I would ask, in fact, that if staff would look into, you know, those claims and the experiences other cities have seen that, if you guys would forward her your data, I think that that would be an important question, that if this really is something that we can do, which will make our environment and our world a better place, and, you know, you know, either save us money or be or cost us nothing, then it's something we should absolutely be looking into. I appreciate if staff would would collect that information and see what heads, see if you make heads or tails of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 14, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is the indemnification agreement and insurance coverage with Starship Technologies, and City Attorney McGirt will have that presentation along with, I think, some participation from East Carolina. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mayor and city attorney, Mayor and city council, this item is entitled Indemnification Agreement and Insurance Coverage with Starship Technologies. I'm joined with Mr. Peter Groenendijk, did I get that right, with ECU, he's the Associate Vice Chancellor of Campus Living. ECU has partnered with Hub, with Grubhub, and not Hubgrub, but Grubhub and Starship to bring food deliveries to campus via a robot or a personal delivery device. And so so why is the city concerned about robots delivering food on ECU's campus? Because pursuant to state law, the the robot has the ability to travel on sidewalks and to cross highways and streets. The city's primary concern is safety in that, in what they call the geo-fencing or the geographic boundary for the traveling of the robot, it's going to cross East 10th Street and Ormond Way. And Starship has offered to indemnify the city from any claims, so that means if a third party sued the city due to an accident involving the robot, and the driver thought that the city was involved because the sidewalk was defective, then Starship would have the duty to indemnify us. That means they would have to protect us, reimburse us, defend us with counsel pursuant to the indemnification, so it's a complete indemnification agreement. And additional additionally to that, they've offered the city, and their policy with travelers, they've named the city as an additional insured. So the first, the first So, the first ground of recovery for the city would be the insurance policy. We're named as an additional insured, and the second ground would be the indemnification agreement. The risk manager and the city's insurance carrier, traveler, says that it's adequate insurance and the robot is a low safety risk in terms of accidents. ECU, when the Associate Chancellor comes up, he will tell you about the service area or the geo-fencing of where the robot is traveling. You know, if you've been on ECU's campus in the last week, you may have had a robot traveling behind you, and it was not, it wasn't a horror movie or nightmare. So, the robot is traveling, and it's actually in the council chambers right now. So, they're going to share with you the geo-fencing for the robot. And so, the city's concerned is that the robot, in order to get to the college dormitories, so its insular, it's traveling between Fifth and 10th. The campus is all connected in like a square, but it has to cross East 10th Street to get to College Hill Dormitories. So, that's our concern in terms of safety. And that intersection there, or maybe it's a crosswalk instead of intersection, it has a push-button pedestrian signal, or like the gentleman in the other presentation said, it's a signalized street. Fancy term, I'm trying to be an engineer. It's a pedestrian signalized button there. So, the robot can't get across that street here on Ormond unless a student is coming across and pushes the button, the robot is stuck. So, we're going to let ECU and also Starship explain how that's going to work out. Now, at the end of this presentation, I've given each, placed at each of you all's desk a revised indemnification agreement, a revised certificate of insurance. So, we would ask that you, if you're in favor of this proposal, you adopt the revised indemnification agreement and certificate of insurance. Now, the reason why they're coming to us is because you have regulatory authority. The state law says that if council is of the view that the personal delivery device is a danger to persons, the council could adopt an ordinance prohibiting operation of all personal delivery devices within city limits. So, that's why they're coming to get the council's blessing.
You know, I think we could avoid all this, we could come to an agreement. I think that ECU could build a pedestrian bridge across 10th Street, and then we won't even need to be named as an insurer. I mean, I think that would solve everything, right? And then we'd have safe passage for everybody walking across 10th Street. And the robots.
Great idea, great idea.
You're doing it tonight?
Does anybody want to make a motion?
So, I'm here for any questions, or if you don't have any questions, I wanted to turn it over to ECU. But yeah, are there any questions? I'm here.
No, I was perched to make a motion, but I guess not.
Okay, okay.
I have a question, and it's probably the lawyer in me. Looking at the indemnity agreement in paragraph one, it says the company shall submit proof they obtained commercial general liability insurance with limits of not less than $5 million.
Right.
But the policy states their commercial general liability is only $1 million.
Yeah, if you go further down, Councilmember, under B, umbrella liability.
That's not the same language. That's what my concern is. It says general commercial liability, not excess. I mean, I'm just trying to make it consistent.
Yeah. Well, we also.
You know what happens if there's a problem? Everybody's going to start talking about the words.
Yeah. And we also stay in our motion to allow the city manager or city attorney to make any revisions to the indemnification agreement or insurance certificate. And our risk manager and our insurance carrier tells us we have adequate coverage here. And I see your point here, we could change that to reference that it's $5 million in terms of umbrella liability coverage. And I can talk with our risk manager, I don't want to be a specialist in insurance, but we can reference that it's umbrella liability coverage.
I'm a criminal lawyer, but I'm just looking at this, I'm going, the words don't mean the same. If there's a problem, first thing people will do is start pointing to the language in the contract.
Right.
Since they're equal opportunities, there's no greater bargaining power, one side or the other, the contract laws will say you should have known what you were signing. That's just, that's the only thing I bring up. Otherwise, I'm happy with the robots.
Understood, understood.
Where does it say umbrella, Councilmember?
It's paragraph number one.
That one I see.
And if you look at the insurance, certificate of liability insurance, look at item B, it says commercial general liability, go out to the far right, it limits it to $1 million. So, the language, it's not the same. I mean, the indemnity agreement says $5 million, the actual insurance certificate says $1 million.
And the umbrella says.
The umbrella says $5 billion.
Yes, ma'am, $5 million for the umbrella, but that's not what's in the agreement.
So, we need that in paragraph one.
I think, yes, yes, ma'am, fix it one way or the other to make it consistent. I think everybody's on the same page, they just think it's a wording, but again, you know, being a litigator, these problems aren't a problem until they're a problem in the courtroom, and then people start talking about the wording. Commercial general liability is not umbrella. They're two different types of coverage.
Yeah. And again, I would ask that the council give the city attorney the authorization to make revisions to the indemnification agreement, to make it consistent.
I would make that motion, that council have that power to make the agreements consistent with what's been pointed out, given that it's a march.
I think you mean the attorney. I realize council means vote, but.
I mean.
Councilmen, you mean.
Legal counsel.
And does that also include that we approve, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we've got.
Does anybody want, would we like to allow a guest to show up and give a presentation first?
I would, I would agree with that, yes.
Second, on the power.
All right, so motion's been made, it's already been second. Is everybody okay with listening to the presentation before we move forward with the vote?
Absolutely.
All right. Here we go. You got a tough, tough one. This is going to make or break this one.
Good luck.
I was going to introduce myself. My name's Pete Gronerdyke, I'm the Associate Vice Chancellor for Campus Living. I'll start now with, I've been at ECU for less than two years, and I want to make sure that we leave tonight. I have not made no deals about a land bridge or anything like that, don't get me in trouble when I get home. I'm responsible for housing, dining, transit, transit, ECU transit, not parking, and off-campus services at ECU. And I want to say really thank you to the city manager and her team in helping us be able to get Starship to campus. This is going to be, I think, a real value for our residential dining program. It's an exciting and innovative program, and you're going to get a chance to hear all about it. I brought three colleagues with me. Eileen Zong, who's going to be speaking in a second, she is the Director of Government Relations for Starship. Juan Carahay, I think I said that correct, he's an account manager with Starship. And then we have Kelvin Tarkawasha. Kelvin is new to ECU, he is our air mark resident dining manager. Kelvin is the person responsible for serving 12,000 meals a day on our campus. So, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen, she's going to make the presentation, and then at the end, if there's technical questions, she will definitely answer them. If there's operational questions, I'll answer them. Thank you.
Can she talk about the pedestrian bridge?
Will it allow it?
It's a tunnel.
Tunnel.
Thank you, Peter, for the introduction, and thank you, Mayor, councilmembers and staff for allowing us to present on our robot, our operations and a lot of our safety functions here. As this is getting pulled up, we wanted to do a brief introduction on Starship itself. So, we were started in 2014 by the founders of Skype, and they thought this would be a great piece of technology to bring forward to society based on the solving the last-mile delivery issue. And in 2019 is when we really started our commercial delivery business. And since then, oops, since then, we have been operating commercially across about six countries, which include obviously the US, Germany, Finland, Estonia and the UK. We have completed over 4 million commercial miles delivered. We have also done over 5 million miles of autonomous delivery, which only is second right behind Google's Waymo autonomous miles delivered. And there are about 140,000 street and road crossings that are completed each day with our robot deliveries. And on top of that, we also have 25 state laws that have been passed around personal delivery or these robot operations all across the country, and one of which is North Carolina, which passed in 2020. And we have obviously the robot here today that we wanted to show to you all, and we can bring it to the DIAS area.
Quick demo. This is our Starship robot. We have around 20 of these on campus, and they deliver food and drinks to the students, staff and faculty at ECU's campus. So, you'll notice they have six wheels, so they can climb over curbs, they don't have to use ramps, and they can carry up to six strings as well. So, we do a lot of Starbucks, a lot of bagels, coffee, pizza.
Starbucks in a noun?
No.
You don't have to have Diet Coke in there, do you? It's pulling a wheelie, okay.
You can kind of see how it climbs the curbs there. It's looking up at you.
So, the reason why it can do that was because the robot itself was actually built in Estonia where it snows and there aren't a lot of curb cuts, so it's not very ADA friendly. So, the reason why it can climb over curbs is for that exact reason. So, it has the, it's all weather or all climate, so it can operate in rain, snow, heat. It has 12 cameras that are all around the robot itself, there are ultrasonic sensors, GPS and a whole neural network that allows it to see and navigate the world. It obviously also has light and flashing, the flag also flashes, but it's mainly for humans to see as opposed to it actually needing it to navigate in these spaces.
Does it talk?
It does talk. It'll also sing, sing some songs.
Get tape ready.
He's got his gun pulled.
We've been operating in about 35 campuses all across the country, which include about 25 different states. As you can see on the screen, we obviously operate at East Carolina University. We've been operating at North Carolina ANT for about a little over a year now, and we also operate at a number of these universities that you see on your screen here today. And at ECU, we are only operating in this confined area. So, as you can see on the screen, we have geo-fenced this location. So, the robot, although it's autonomous, it's not sentient, so it will only operate within the geographic boundaries that we set for the robot itself. So, as you can see, we only utilize the space between Fifth Street, crossing 10th Street on Ormond Way to cross on to College Hill District. So, we're confined also by Katanji Street, sorry if I'm butchering that, and Bennett Way. So, in the one week that we have been operating at ECU, we have completed over 1,100 deliveries in the first week. So, there has been an amazing uptake on the university campus by students. They can utilize all of the functions of deliveries from the robot through the Grubhub app. And what we pride ourselves on here at Starship is our workforce development. So, every time we enter into an agreement with a new university campus, what we do is we hire students on the campus in order to have development in their work. So, they not only maintain the robots, but they also learn technical skills like mechanical engineering. And we actually hire a lot of these students to return to full-time work for us moving forward. So, there's a lot of growth and potential with these students who work here, and as we grow on campuses, we hire more and more students to facilitate that work, which obviously gives them a leg up when they expand to other areas of working as they graduate. We also will be hiring a full-time position, which includes benefits for that person. And beyond just the Starship operations side, on the university dining side, there has also been, because of the uptake in the deliveries, there have actually been added 352 employee hours per week for these delivery services. Oh, the video doesn't play, but we wanted to show a little bit of how this robot actually integrates into the community. So, as, if the video played, you would see a lot of the children and dogs getting really excited about seeing the robots coming and delivering food to their homes.
A dog, yeah.
Yes, and with that, I.
Thank you, have a nice day.
They also, it also sings.
Chief?
I got it.
I have a question. I've seen robots crossing in front of Umston, and I don't see that as part of your geo-fencing. Was that just maybe for a limited time? I don't think I've seen them up as far as Evans Street, but I have seen them there in front of Umston, crossing 10th Street.
Umston.
Yeah, they should have been on the north side of 10th Street, on the sidewalk in front of Evans. They should not have gone to the other side or crossed at a different location. If, to our knowledge, that has not happened. If that happened, it may have been a couple of weeks ago when they were still mapping, and we had a kind of a final agreement on where we run across. That crossing is a real point of tension because it's, obviously, it's one spot and they tend to back up, so we've been working through that.
So, it'll only be crossing 10th Street in that one place? Okay, I think it probably was a couple of weeks ago, because when I first saw them, where there's that new flashing lights, there were several of them there. So, no more?
Yeah, we explored that, and we actually thought that would be the better one for a while, and then in conversations with the city, the number of people there and the cars backing up during the day, we realized that's not a good one.
Okay, okay. So, that's another place. They're crossing in Ormond, they have a location to cross.
Councilwoman Smiley?
So, one of the few real fun things about being on council is that if you have, sometimes you have questions about how things work, and sometimes people show up in front of you who can't answer them. So, I have in fact seen, you know, them trying to cross. I've gotten out my car and watched, stood over there at the crossing and watched them try to cross. And I've seen situations where, you know, if three or four were backed up on each side and one was in the median waiting for a chance, and then the light would change and no cars would come, and they would sit still. And so, my question is, what is the basic algorithm? How do these things decide to cross and when to cross? How do they, presumably, they said it's a, the city, it's weird when the city attorney has the most interesting presentation, by the way. He said that it's a push-button crossing, and I don't, this thing doesn't have any fingers, so is it, can it activate the crossing signal? How does that work?
So, at that specific crossing, what we've done is we've analyzed the amount of people crossing per time of day. So, we're only allowing robots to travel that path when there is constant traffic, so we don't have a robot waiting with a coffee in it for 30 minutes or so. What we see is throughout most of the day, we do have really good pedestrian traffic to push that button. Now, the robots are very risk adverse, so, you know, with all of these deliveries that we're doing, we don't want to lose a single robot because they're not cheap, and we also don't want to cause any safety incidents. So, they are very risk adverse, and over time, they get better at recognizing the traffic light and recognizing cars, any potential obstacles on its path. So, it's going to be more conservative, and as it gets better, it's going to cross more of those times that it has a right-of-way. But that's what you'll see. But we have already made some adjustments, so we have not seen any backups of robots more than two or three at a time since last Wednesday, I believe.
But you'll see the robot stay in the median because that's the safest place for it to be, estimating people crossing or estimating the amount of time that it's allotted to cross. So, that's maybe why you saw it stuck in the middle.
So, you're saying that it's essentially going to sit there and wait for a student or any pedestrian to come and press the button?
Yeah.
And when they press the button, the lights will start blinking and they detect that, okay, I am now, I now have a.
Right. And they can recognize if someone did not press the button and is waiting for the light, it will actually ask them to press the traffic light button, so they can both get across safely.
There's a traffic light there, though, there's an actual red light, so I mean, at some point, it's going to stop.
If it doesn't go, then it.
It's not going to go with just the red light for incoming traffic, it'll wait for the pedestrian lights.
Yeah. So, who monitors this throughout the day?
So, we have a team of remote assistance specialists in the US and also overseas that monitor the service, and if there are any backups, they can also take over remotely and control it. But their robots are about 95 to 99% autonomous.
Has anybody, and it's going to happen, has anybody tried to ride one of these? Is this going to happen? Late-night delivery, somebody's going to jump on it and try and ride it.
If Councilmember Robinson is willing to.
Yeah. There's a weight limit, and I was surely exceeding. But I can see a college kid at 1:00 in the morning.
Yes.
That's had a little bit and thinks it would be a cool idea to see if he can ride the box.
Yes, so now we're in, this is our 30. Yes, so now we're in, this is our 35th campus, over four years of campus service. We have seen some things like that. What we're doing to start out with at ECU is we're cutting off deliveries at 8:45 PM.
It also talks to you, right? It's like, sit me down, or, don't do this.
And, and it will detect that with the cameras and with the weight sensors as well.
Does it say head to the chopper?
Yeah. It'll actually, you know, say, please let me pass, I'm going to be late. Or if it's a safety issue-
Yes, anxiety.
Gets more violent. It does have a siren, like a car alarm.
So does it make only one food delivery at a time?
Yep.
Okay.
That's right.
And the lid is locked until the person who it's supposed to be delivered to unlocks it with their phone.
Okay, that's good.
So you won't get my-
Again, I-
No one will take your food.
That's right. Just wanted, again, my, my daughter and I, one of the, my few, one of the only things in the last, like, six years I've told, showed my daughter she thought was cool. We, we two went down there and we actually parked and sort of sat across the street from the, the Student Union there and watched them come out. And now these weren't headed for 10th Street, these were headed back up toward the Hill Dorm, not toward the downtown dorms. And those streets there are not, they're state roads, I guess. I mean, they're not technically city roads. The one that goes up there toward the, toward the parking deck, and then there's a, an L that goes off toward Charles, that's, I guess, used to be Ninth Street, God knows what it is now. And for a while there, they were part, they were in fact trying to cross those. And I did see a couple of them nearly get run over there. What they, if you, if a car starts to cross in front of it, literally it screeches on brakes and then backs up three feet with, you know, in a rather aggress, abrupt and aggressive way and kind of chirp, kind of chirps, too, you know, like, ah! But I noticed, but then the next day, when I went to see if I could make them do it again.
Are you stopping early?
I am.
I appreciate the diligence here.
So, but now they're, now they're actually, now they're going up the sidewalk and crossing back, higher up there on the other side of the deck, right? Yeah.
He watched too much loss in space.
Is this sort of, so you guys are going to be, so my question then, and I was in fact leading to one, is there are, you know, interior roads at ECU, on ECU's campus that are not necessarily under our, but, you know, our citizens do drive on them. So I'm just curious what other crossings you've got and to the extent you're able to minimize those, is, do you consider those to be road crossings, I guess?
Yeah, I, I thought I'd jump in, because that's kind of an operational question. We saw the same, I'll call them points of tension, in the first few days, where they were sitting in, in the curb cuts for long periods of time, because they're watching lots of traffic. We, what we have done, actually, starting tomorrow, we are moving the loading of those to what I'd be the northeast corner of the university center. And so they're generally going to be avoiding that, that intersection there. We also want to avoid the front of the parking deck. They will still have to make their way through and around to the West End residence halls, but I think that will alleviate a lot of that. You would have seen that got a lot better over the coming days. As I say, it's kind of scary, but the additional intelligence, as they continue to learn and navigate that, I'm not seeing that anymore. But we went ahead and made that operational change. Also, put them on 10th Street for a shorter duration, because they're leaving from that northeast corner. Then they're coming out at Umston, as opposed to going all the way down.
Cool, thanks. It, it's the only thing I really saw that actually looked like, you know, the 10th Street stuff looked like it was slow and they were unable to get there. But the ones over there at, near the parking deck actually looked like something was going to be hurt. So it's good to see that you're adjusting.
I take my kids to see birds and ducks, and he takes his kids to see robots.
Makes them chirp. Aggresses them.
Councilmember Bell.
All right, I've got a couple of questions, and I think y'all covered this, but just wanted to double check. Is this only available for on-campus delivery?
Yes, it's only available in that area that we defined.
Okay, does it record video? Like, is it, like, I know it's operating off a GIS mapping system. Does it record the actual streets that it's going down?
It does record, but there's no access to these videos. So we only keep records of it for any accidents purposes and any time, for example, if officials in the city, police officers request it for any certain reason. But our privacy policy is very high.
We adhere to GDPR, which is some of the most stringent privacy protections in the world. We, also, the robot does not record above the knees. It's blurred out or obfuscated unless it's at a crossing and needs to see that light, or there's an incident.
Okay. At some point, I'm sure there will be a request from off-campus merchants that would want to be involved, that would want to have their, you know, food delivery, or food delivered, or, I guess, coffee delivered, as that enters through the services. Is that going to be available at any point, or are y'all?
So right now, we are only focused on the campus, and we're only operating in that area. Obviously, if down the line, the city is comfortable with our operations, that could be a potential. But right now, we are only focused on the campus.
Have you expanded outside of the campuses? Like, I know you mentioned y'all have been on multiple others.
On other campuses, yes. So at a number of the universities that I showed you on that list, we actually navigate city streets. And for example, recently, we started operations in Moscow, Idaho, throughout the whole city. But we always work with the city beforehand before we conduct any business, like, in that nature.
Okay, was that change initiated by the city in those instances, or by Starship?
We would request it, and then they would approve it, essentially.
We have seen the other way around as well. An example is during the start of the COVID pandemic, March 2020, we had, you know, a lot of university campuses closed down. And so my home campus, George Mason, closed down as well. But the city of Fairfax has a lot of people that need to get their groceries delivered and didn't want to go out. So they actually asked us to come to the city and deliver groceries around.
And I might jump in just very quickly. Any requests like that would obviously go through the university. We're housing it, we're hosting it. But I thought I'd back up and just share why we're doing this. This is really intended, I'm sorry. This is really intended to bring value to the residential dining program. And so you're probably all a little bit familiar with dining on campus. You get to go in the dining hall and eat all you want. And you have this declining balance, we call them purple and gold bucks. Purple bucks, you know, students get this bucket of money. And then as parents, you hope that they spend that over the course of the year. What we're finding is that too many students are leaving at the end of the year and they're left on the table, then their parents see that and they get really unhappy. So we saw this as a way to add value to that dining plan, to encourage them to use those dollars. And that way, you know, they'll tell their friends not only about the innovative service, but that there's value to the plan. So that's why we brought it. We haven't brought it with the intention of driving sales. It might drive some sales. There'll be faculty and staff that will want to order a cup of coffee. But for the most part, it is intended to deal with the, the value perception in the dining plan. So I, I don't see that expanding much, any, anytime in the foreseeable future.
Okay, is the university still offering, this is a little off topic from Starship, is the university still allowing students to use their pirate bucks downtown and some of the businesses down there? I know it's been a couple of years since that was implemented.
Yeah, no, that is a different, that's a different program. But students are able to put money on a pirate bucks account, and those are available to some vendors off-campus as well as on-campus. The purple and gold bucks are specific to the residential dining plans.
Still losses in all cases.
Yeah, I understand.
Couple of years.
Yeah, just to go. And then my last question is actually for our city attorney. I have not seen any issues with these yet or had any, or fielded any complaints. But if at some point there was, you know, to be an increase in the level of complaint, does us signing off on this make it impossible for us to get out of the agreement? I wouldn't think so.
Right, and the agreement says, either paragraph 16 or 17, that the city does not waive its regulatory or legislative authority. So we could get out of this contract if we have to. It's paragraph, actually, 14. Nothing contained in this agreement stops the city or impairs the city from exercising any regulatory, legislative, or governmental powers, including the defense of governmental immunity. So we're not waiving legislative authority by entering this agreement. Yeah, but also in response to your question, this is the second college campus in the state, and the second city in, in the state to allow this on college campuses. So North Carolina A&amp;T is doing this in Greensboro. And only one city has personal delivery devices in downtown, it's the city of Charlotte. They have some kind of, I sent y'all a link on that, but they have some kind of test, kind of test with restaurants downtown.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seen none. There's been a motion, it's been made, it's been properly seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 15 is, is the approval of the American Rescue Plan Act Small Business Assistance Program. And Tiana Bearman will have that presentation. Ms. Bearman.
All right, good evening. Let's see. All right, I'm bringing back tonight the American Rescue Plan Small, excuse me, American Rescue Plan Act Small Business Program. The intent of the program is to assist small businesses in development and continued recovery from the pandemic. Funding of up to $50,000 is proposed to be awarded to businesses for completion of approved projects that benefit the public with a total ARPA allocation of $400,000. Qualifications of public benefit include enhancement and expansion of the city's tax base, creation of local jobs, limitation on businesses' need to relocate, and enhancement of businesses' ability to maintain or expand operations. All right, goals are two-tiered for this program. First, to support existing small businesses that were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic through rehabbing new or existing commercial buildings. And then also to support startup businesses, including investment and improvements in commercial buildings and, as well as operation costs to assist in business development. Okay, eligibility is determined by location and the number of locations, as well as the number of employees. And since this was brought to council last month, staff is proposing increasing that 50-employee cap to 100 employees to include more businesses. And the amount of sales, tax standing, and other specifications that are detailed in the application. Okay, here's a map that identifies qualified census tracts for potential eligible applicants that you can see in the, the orange on the map. And this, these areas are determined by the federal government. All right, eligible expenses include rehab, outfit, expansion, facade improvements, commercial equipment, and machinery. It's also worth noting eligible expenses were amended following the January council workshop to exclude furniture and fixtures in response to council discussion. Scoring is based on the following factors. Achievement of the goals, budget projections, review of financials, credit history and background check. Points will be awarded for not having received previous COVID assistance. And 45 of the available 60 points are required to ensure eligibility. Awards will be made based on funding availability. The first round is set to open in March. And any remaining funds will be awarded in the round two beginning October of this year. All funds must be obligated by 2020, 2024, and expended by December of 2026. So the application cutoff in September of '24 will allow for reallocation, if necessary, prior to the obligation deadline. All right, summarizing next steps. Finalizing the application and executing agreement with an underwriter would happen through the remainder of this month. Staff will promote the program following adoption, including public information sessions, social media blasts, and communication through the media. The intended go-live for the application would be the beginning of March. And award notification would be made by the end of August for the first round. All right, so staff recommends adoption of the American Rescue Plan Act Small Business Assistance Program, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Bearman?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? Councilmember Bell.
Yes. This one in particular? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, motion's been made, properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
I believe it's the last one. Before you start on that one, in consultation with the city attorney, I'm going to ask that the council recuse myself, because I am a sitting board member for the Community Foundation of Eastern North Carolina.
If I recall, that's a matter of state law at this point.
Exactly, yeah. And it's not clear that it applies in this situation, because the nonprofit's giving the money to the city instead of the city giving the money to the nonprofit. But in abundance of caution, I recommend that-
The, Mayor Conley recuse himself.
A move that we accept his recusing.
All right, do I get to?
You know, because it's a recusal, instead of an excusal, it's a matter of state, state law. If he believes he's, he needs to recuse, he doesn't need a vote, so.
Look at you.
Perfect. Here you go, Mayor Pro-Town.
So-
You're up.
I'll re, I'll go ahead and read the item. Item 16 is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Six to the 2022-23 City Greenville Budget, the Special Revenue Grant Fund, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund. And Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Budget Amendment Six. Budget Amendment Six includes adjustments to the General Fund, the Public Works Engineering and Wreck and Parks Capital Projects Funds, the Facilities Improvements Fund, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Breakdown of the amendment, we are recognizing additional revenue received within the Recreation and Parks Department due to increased programming activity in the General Fund. It's an increase to the General Fund of $200,000. We are transferring the remaining street improvements funds from the Public Works Capital Projects Fund to the Engineering Capital Projects Fund in order to consolidate the pavement management program. That's a neutral impact to the Public Works and Engineering Capital Projects Fund of just under $870,000. We are recognizing a donation received from the Community Foundation of NCE East for Wildwood Park, an increase to the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund of a little over $850,000. And we are transferring funding from the Facilities Improvement Fund to the Grant Special Revenue Fund as match funding for the Environmental Enhancement Grant. That's an increase of the Grant Special Revenue Fund of $62,660. And as a result of these amendments, the City of Greenville Operating Fund increases to $265.4 million. And staff recommends approval of the Operating Fund Ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, and the Special Revenue Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. We've moved to second, and you have to call the vote.
You're the mayor. Don't make me the mayor, why?
He's been excused.
I've been, I've been recused.
All right.
Mayor Pro-Town, all in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. All opposed?
All right, motion passes six zero.
All right.
Time to adjourn.
Good job. We'll now move on to the review of the February 9, 2023, City Council Agenda of Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay, the first appointment we have is to the Animal Control Appeal Board, can take a nomination from anybody on the council.
I, I do believe that the Police Department has been working hard on a possible appointee. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get a, an appointee to recommend to the council.
Yay.
Okay.
I've got curiosity, what's the, we're required to have someone that's an actual veterinarian.
For the, for the Animal Control Board ordinance that was approved by the council.
So the council can modify that, too, right? Just to get, I mean, to get somebody, maybe somebody that might be, I don't know what you'd call it, kind of assistant, but-
Like a vet tech or something.
Kind of a tech or something like that, to be a part of the board. I'm just, this has been going on since we, since we got sworn into office.
Right, I do believe that we are close on it. Maybe if you'll give us about another 30 days, if we cannot, we can, I'll work with the chief and we'll, if we cannot find an appointee, I'll work with the chief and we will potentially suggest some additional, some language that might change to give us a little bit more-
I've got a recommendation, that if you can't find somebody in 30 days, we'll invent a policy and the chief of police will have to-
I mean, I think you'd do a great job, because the animal, the-
The drill board. Twice. Pressure.
He looks excited about it.
All right, so no button.
I wouldn't want to make that decision about a dog, I know that.
All right. Next, the boards and commissions. First board that we have is Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn.
You know, I was not aware I had that one, so thank you for letting me know. I'll continue.
Okay. Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
I will continue that one as well.
Okay. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilmember Daniels.
I'm going, I plan to reappoint Mr. Israel Mueller and appoint Mr. Marcus Harrington.
Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Pro-Tim Glover.
I will continue that until it's done.
All right. Next is the Multimodal Transportation Commission.
Nominate Catherine Dale. She's, has been attending all the meetings, and actually has attended more meetings than a lot of, some of the members. But she's really active, and I think she's a good voice to have on that committee.
Okay. And those appointments will be made on Thursday. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee. That's a direct appointment. Councilmember Blackburn.
And I'm researching that for Thursday.
Yep. Next is the Recreation and Parks Commission. That's Councilmember Daniels.
I'm going to continue that.
Okay. And finally, we've got the Youth Council. Mayor Pro-Tim Glover.
All right, and that concludes appointments, Madam Manager. At the February 9 meeting, the council will hold several public hearings. Item Six is an ordinance to annex Davenport Farms at Emerald Park, phases seven and eight, involving 13.0728 acres located at the current termini of Chessmount Drive and Zircon Drive. Item Seven is an ordinance to annex Wimbledon Park Lot 6, involving 15.2179 acres located between Wimbledon Drive and Stonehenge Drive and west of East Arlington Boulevard. And item number nine is an ordinance requested by Four Life Properties LLC to rezone a total of 90.378 acres from unoffensive industry and heavy commercial to R6 for Track 1, which is 87.059 acres, and from unoffensive industry to R6A CA, which is residential high-density multifamily conservation overlay for Track 2, which is 3.319 acres for the property located along the western right-of-way of Allen Road and adjacent to the Pitt County landfill. Item number nine is an ordinance requested by Shred Dev Investments LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 1.539 acres from residential high-density to commercial for the property located at the southeastern corner of the intersection of West Arlington Boulevard and Dickinson Avenue Extension. That is the agenda for the February 9 meeting, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, now we'll move on to the City Manager's report.
I have one item. I would ask the council to consider canceling the February 20 meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. Any discussion? Seen none? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, the meeting is officially canceled. Is that it?
That's it, Mayor.
All right, let's start with Councilmember Robinson.
I know. I know.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Anne. Happy birthday to you.
That young girl is bound for glory.
Yes, thank you all very much. I will point out the white dress my mother made. Okay? And I do believe that that is my favorite winter coat of all time.
I kind of like that. I kind of like that color.
Thank you to your sister for providing the pictures. That was very nice of her.
You got to get her, aren't you?
What kind of car is that?
And I think somebody had to change those into colored pictures.
And thank you to Brock, because I think Brock back there has participated in that. Thank you very much.
I don't sing often, but when it's your birthday, I sing.
Thank you.
All good?
Thank you, that's all good.
All right. Councilmember Bell.
No comment.
Councilmember Smiley.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I would like to join everybody in wishing our city manager a happy birthday yesterday and her sister's birthday today. So happy birthday to you both. And I'd just like to, that's a very joyful occasion. I'd just like to shift our focus just for a moment to Turkey and Syria, where they've had an incredible, not just one earthquake, but two earthquakes. And the last total is over 3,000 people have died now, and I've heard it's getting close to 10,000 that have been injured. A lot of these folks, when you look at Syria, they've already been dealing with years of war. A lot of them are sort of stuck in the border area. They don't even have anywhere to go, and now there's an earthquake, too. For me, it has been an opportunity just to reflect on how grateful I am that we have not had a disaster of that magnitude, even though we do have hurricanes from time to time. We've really never experienced anything like that. And we're also very, very fortunate that we are not subject to war at this point, the way a country like Ukraine is. So for me, it's just been a time to sort of reflect with gratitude. And also, if anyone is interested in trying to help the folks in Turkey, the Red Cross has, the Red Cross and the Red Crescent have actually established a fund, the Disaster Response Emergency Fund for Turkey and Syria. So their effort's already underway where you can contribute and get some money flowing in to provide shelter and food and water and other kinds of care for these folks. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels.
Okay, I would like to say this is February, and it is Black History Month. I would encourage all of our citizens to visit our African-American culture trail, learn of the history of some wonderful things that we have throughout our city. And I'd also like to mention a couple of names. First, for our first servants in the African-American community, and that first being Raymond Carney. As you all know, he is my uncle, my dad's baby brother, and he was the first African-American firefighter in Pitt County. That has always meant a lot to us. I remember the days on Fifth Street when he was just sitting there and I didn't think firefighters did anything. But I've since learned the importance of what you all do each and every day. My uncle taught us community. He taught us giving back, and he has meant so many things and continues to mean so many things to our family. Mr. Ed Carter, he was the first African-American mayor in the city of Greenville. And Ms. Candy Smith, who was the first African-American female mayor in this city. And Mr. Dennis Mitchell, who was our first at-large member. These individuals are leading the way in our community because we've got Ms. Mayor Pro-Tim Rose Glover, who has served on this council a long, long time.
Decades.
Yes, and we are thankful for everything that they do, everything that each of us will continue to do, and the growth that we are part of in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels. Mayor Pro-Tim Glover.
I just wanted to say happy birthday to Anne again.
Thank you.
And to your sister today.
Thank you. Give her flowers.
That's it.
All right. Happy birthday, Madam Manager. Thank your sister for the pictures. That was very plump for her to sit in an office. She sounded really quick, too.
Oh, she was enjoying it. I'm sure she did.
Also, I want to remind everybody that recycling is back. A lot of people have asked me about recycling.
What is this?
And I don't know, I've got a lot of phone calls in the city of Greenville, letting me know that the recycling was discontinued and that it was now open back up starting yesterday, or starting today. So you can take out all your recycling stuff that's been there for almost two weeks now and send to the curb, and we will pick it up. So make sure you do that. If your neighbors are probably sick of throwing your recyclers.
I agree with you.
I know, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted.
And Councilmember Blackburn, I'm just like, we're thinking exactly the same. Amazing, amazing.
After all, after all.
It's amazing, it's coming around. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.